Okay, this is Chairman Mike McCoo of the Town Wellington Board of Finance calling to order the combined regular and special budget meeting of Thursday, March 17th, 2021 at 7:06 PM. First order is seating of alternates if needed. I believe we have all of our regular members on board, so we don't need to do that. Approval of minutes. Kelsey and I are working on catching up a couple of minutes, so we don't have any for tonight. Present to speak. Public participation is desired and encouraged. Speakers will be limited to time and appropriateness of comments to maintain progress, stay on topic, and maintain decorum. So who do we have out there? If you're in, if you're in video when you would like, turn on your camera, wave your hand, give us a moment because we have two screens of people to scroll through. And then we'll go to the people who are not on video next. Anybody there wave your hand on video? Pete Latentich?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Peter Latentich, 97 Trask Road. I want to address the budget, forthcoming of budget appropriation. That's on your agenda this evening. Very concerned about the budget that's evolving. Normally I like to wait till the public hearing, but in this case, there's cause for concern. It appears the first selectman's budget is hovering somewhere around 11, an 11% increase. This, this seemed to be a staggering number to me. I recognize it's still early in the process, but it's virtually twice even the high rates of inflation that we're experiencing now. When I look in my chronicle, I see towns increasing spending in our neighboring towns somewhere in the 5% to 7% range. So I'm not quite understanding why we're so high. I would ask the Board of Finance, send this back to the Board of Selectmen for consideration. I don't want our townspeople to be in a situation where they would have to choose between purchasing food or paying their rent because our taxes increase so dramatically, particularly for us senior citizens and single parents and students that live in our town. So I, I asked that this be reconsidered by the Board of Selectmen even before the Board of Finance appropriation process, so we have a cleaner start. I would also ask that CIP be looked at in particular. There's a dramatic increase there, if I'm reading it correctly, from our historic 2% to something in the neighborhood of 10%, 10% increase. Again, I'm puzzled by this. And I, it's concerning to me that so many items would be placed into that budget. It almost seems like I prioritize anymore. Everything simply becomes part of the CIP budget and that, that becomes unsustainable. So I urge prudence by the Board of Finance and revisitation by the Board of Selectmen. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jim Bullock, as before, go ahead.
Hi, Jim Bullock, Laurel Drive. I was personally very uncomfortable working on that selectman's budget. And then as time went on, everything shot up. We had the fuel costs and all that. I think, I think we passed a different set of numbers than what ultimately ended up. And I'm more than happy to review this again. I know we have some upcoming meetings scheduled and all that, so I don't, again, I'm willing to work with the, with the Board of Finance here. This is a very tough situation. And I, you know, if you're not comfortable with this budget, as I'm, as I'm sure I'm not comfortable, then please use our help and, and send it back to all the departments, whoever, where you need it. I mean, if you, I think you can look at CIP, there's a lot of things that are in there. And even other ends of the budget. I mean, we've made some generic assumptions and said, okay, here's some adjustments in salaries and things like that. Now that the inflation has seemed to have taken off and since we started this budget process, we have a Ukraine situation that's spiking things. I think it warrants a second look. So just want to let you know that we're resource available to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Clark?
I'd like to echo Peter and Jim's comment. I, I didn't have 11%. I, I read the minutes from the first selectman's meeting, which was, I think it was 9.7% or 9.8%. So I don't know where 11% comes from. But that's, again, as Peter said, that's about twice as much as the real felt inflation. The Fed number, the Fed uses, they don't use the CPI, they use a price deflator, blah, blah, blah. It's complex, but it's not really 7.5% or 7.9% that the CPI, they're looking, the number they use is around five and a half, 6%. And I think that a five and a half or 6% increase in order to keep pace with inflation is good. It's acceptable, that would be acceptable for the town. I share, you know, Peter's concern about people that are on fixed incomes and the less fortunate who are going to get hit with apparently, you know, I don't know what, a 10% increase, I guess. So that, that seems very, very high. And I would ask them to go back and take a look at it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Others in video, wave your hand. Michelle Cunningham?
Good evening, Michelle Dusset Cunningham, 41 Lisca Road. I am very concerned about the budget as well, in part because we've been kicking the can down the road on a number of repairs for a long time. And I think that it's really time for us to think about investing in our infrastructure rather than paying for more expensive repairs later. That's exactly the problem where we're at with the schools. We're going to be at a point where we're going to have to make more expensive repairs the longer we delay a decision. Certainly that's at the school building committee right now. But the looming potential school building project of whatever size and scope that is must be playing and weighing heavily on all of your minds as you're looking at this year's budget because the more we invest now, the more we will need to invest, you know, the less we'll have available to invest in other infrastructure projects. So I don't envy you the, the difficult decisions you have in front of you. I don't think that it's nearly as dire as the previous speakers have brought about, but I do think we have to be cautious in spending that has long-term implications such as new equipment or other types of expenses that have long-term leases over time or salaries, because salaries similarly impact future budgets. So I'm just urging you to consider looking at not being penny wise and pound foolish, but to invest in the infrastructure that we need to first and then move forward with that. But that said, we do not need to keep tons of money in our bank for a rainy day. We've had the rainy day. We're moving ahead. It's good to be cautious, but there's no reason to be alarmist.
Thank you. Other present to speak? If you're on video, wave your hand. If you are not in video and you'd like to speak, please unmute and call out your name or raise your little yellow hand if you have the ability to do that on Zoom. Does anyone see anybody? I'm trying to scroll between two screens here. Anybody else on present to speak? I don't see anybody. Okay. Let's move to old business, ARPA update. Christina, you want to start?
Sure, I can, I can basically just give an update of where we're at. We have a, our first public hearing coming up on Monday, the 21st at 6:00 PM, sorry, 6:30 PM. And at that meeting, we will be presenting our process, which, you know, is all on Zoom meetings. Anyway, if people want to, want to watch what we're, how we've come to where we are. But basically, I think we have six or seven projects that we are going to be hearing about and then potentially voting after the hearing to appropriate or not appropriate or make some sort of decision. So that is, that's where we're at. It's, but we're by no means done with the process. We're only at the beginning, really. These are just the first projects that have made, made their way through the steps and we will probably be having these maybe on a monthly or bimonthly basis going forward until, and until the money is spent. So that's, that's basically it.
Okay. Erica, I see we have Attorney O'Donnell here. He just turned on his camera. Do you want us to bring him on?
Sure. I sent you over the memo outlining our authority to have the ARPA Commission and its legality. I know, Mike, you question still some things. So if you want those addressed, our attorney is here to address those. But, but I'll say the conclusion of that memo was that the process as it was approved at town meeting is legal. And if you have specific questions you'd like answered, we can touch on those here.
Okay. I think that's a great opportunity to hopefully try to get it as clear as quickly as possible. As I said in my response to you, I was looking forward to the attorney's letter so that we could put this issue to bed. And at least in my perception of it, there wasn't, there wasn't complete clarity because of a couple of questions not being directly answered, at least in the way that I had asked them from the board. So maybe I'm misunderstanding. It could be that I'm misunderstanding the attorney's response. So I think this is a great opportunity. I don't know if you want to just take it, Attorney O'Donnell, and I'll see if I can put, I don't know that I can get it up.
Yeah. I don't think that's necessary, Mike.
Okay, well. You're muted, attorney.
Everybody, thank you for having me on this evening. It's, it's good to see some old friends. Always like to see everybody. I think with regard to this, to this ARPA issue, it was essentially decided when the town's legislative body met and voted to establish an ARPA Commission that was empowered through the legislative body, which we do for many other processes here in Vernon, sorry, Willington, looking at my Vernon file, that, that's what our town legislative body is. That's how we make decisions. We are, there, there's nothing in ARPA or in state statute that requires the Board of Finance to have any oversight over the process. I'm frankly, I feel like we're sort of looking for a problem where maybe none exists. If there is legitimate concern or if there's an example in the law that I haven't seen, and then apparently a number of other towns in the state haven't seen, that indicates why establishing an independent ARPA Commission through the town's normal channels of making decisions is somehow unlawful, I would be more than happy to examine that information. However, I have not seen to date any information that would indicate there's been anything wrong with this process. Again, it's been done by multiple other towns across the state. And as far as the other questions that were asked, you know, some of those honestly have a legal solution or answer, you know, in terms of who cuts the checks. Well, that's just through our normal, our normal process. There's no special process for that. The ARPA funds have already been accepted. They're in our bank account. There's not a whole lot else to do there, I think, unless there is some formal indication, whether it's a statute, and I've looked at a couple statutes that have been sent along that don't really, are not really relevant to this issue. If there is a legal opinion out there that I haven't seen, a case that somehow indicates that this would be unlawful, like I said, I'd be happy to take a look at it. But from our, you know, from my research, the research that our firm has done, and the memo that we wrote, nothing seems to indicate that's a problem. And again, I'd point out, this has been done by a number of other towns across the state. So that means that they've also overlooked something. So again, I'm happy to, you know, to be wrong. I'm not here to say that I, you know, I know everything about this, but it's, it's a new process. But I think what we need to go back to at the crux of all this is, we did this through town meeting, right? That, that's how we make decisions like this. And that's what we did. And, and it could have, you know, if, if the town had decided to, that it did not want to go in this direction, townspeople had decided against it, they would have voted against it. They did not. And so at this point, it sort of feels like we're, to some extent, looking, you know, we're sort of thwarting the will of the taxpayers at this point, which I think is, you know, of course, we're supposed to do our due diligence, but absent something clear and obvious that this is an unlawful way of proceeding, I'm, I'm sort of, I think we've done our due diligence, and I don't see any issue with moving forward.
So I appreciate your comments, and I just want to clarify that as my role as chairman and in my reaching out on this, I'm not trying to find, you know, you made the comment, you were concerned that we're looking for a problem that isn't there. I'm not looking for a problem that isn't there. I'm responding to taxpayers' concerns, and I'm looking for clarity that isn't there, not a problem. I, I honestly, as I said to Erica, I really was hopeful when this came in. She said, you know, we're spending a lot of money on this letter. It's going to have a lot of clarity. It'll put this issue to bed. That's what I was hoping for. And for example, in your letter, you talked about other towns that have ad hoc commissions. Those are good examples, except there was nothing in your letter that said those commissions had authority to spend. As a matter of fact, some of those towns don't have authority to spend. They just advise back to a Board of Selectmen or a Board of Finance who has the authority. That's the clarity we're looking to be sure of, that we don't, that we don't accidentally have a procedural problem. And it's not a question that the taxpayers voted for the ordinance. I was at the meeting, I voted for the ordinance. It was just a matter of, for example, every other grant we get, the taxpayers vote to receive the money. And we did not do that. As you said, it's in the bank account, which gives us the impression that it's, certainly it's received in sort of a physical sense. We have the money. It was merely a question of legality. Do we need to vote to accept the grant so that we are following some sort of legal process? If your belief of the ARPA statute is that that's not a requirement, then that's a, that answers that question.
Right. And I, I would say that by, by, you know, if, if that's what it concerns, I'd say by authorizing the ARPA Commission with the language that we use, that is de facto vote to accept the money. Whether, you know, I, I don't believe that we need to formally do that, but I would say that by the tax, by the taxpayers coming together and voting to create this commission with the parameters that they did, that is certainly tacit approval of accepting the ARPA funds.
Okay, so I, I understand that, and I would tend to agree. But I think, I would assume you, Bev, and anyone being a lawyer, would know that tacit approval is not, you know, doesn't, doesn't always stand up. So I guess what I would say is, to recap, you're feeling confident the acceptance of the money has already been done legally. You're feeling confident that the commission as constructed has the authority to authorize expenditures. And you did say tonight already that you felt that it would be the normal process for writing the checks. The only, the question that came up is, of course, our normal process is the Board of Finance suggests to the selectman that they call a town meeting, if it's something that fits that, or the townspeople have already approved a budget, in which case we don't have to bring all those individual things back to the townspeople because the budget got approved by the townspeople. So they are now saying, we know you're going to spend that money because we approved the budget. We saw the line items, I shouldn't say line items, we saw the department's budgets and we approved it. So then your, your feeling is that the ARPA Commission can approve something, and that gives the legal direction to our town's finance department to write checks.
That's correct.
And then they would still be signed. I believe the selectmen's, the Board of Selectmen still sign checks. So then that would authorize the Board of Selectmen to put their signatures on the checks.
Just just the normal course of business. Once that, you know, once the commission has decided to use the funds, however they decide to use it, then it would just be, it's, there's no extra processes that I think would need to be followed. The purpose isn't to drag everybody back, you know, to your point. Every time that we want to spend something, that we come back and, you know, have to revote every single time. Again, I don't have the, the language that established the commission in front of me. But, you know, again, establishing the commission, I don't think you can overlook, you know, I don't want to rely too much on tacit approval, but the commission was established with a clear purpose. And I think anything else that frustrates that purpose would seem contrary to the role and the, the reason for the establishment of that commission in the first place. So if you said, well, we established a commission, but it can't write checks. Well, it's not writing the checks, right? It's just, it's going back through the normal processes. So I think a lot of this is our questions that I imagine when the people came out to vote for this, and you said, Mike, you said yourself that you voted for it, it was with the understanding that the commission would be authorized to, or the commission would be able to authorize the expenditures of this money. Otherwise, what is the purpose of the commission?
I would agree. And one of the things that is in the ordinance is it says it would follow normal purchasing processes. And I think the intent was that that would be things like if you had to get three bids for things or things like that. But some people in the town, I think, rightfully asked the question, does that mean it goes through the normal process back to the Board, back to the Board of Finance and the townspeople, which I don't think was ever the intent of the ordinance. But because it was written in that fashion, that was the question that came up. So this was all just an effort, again, not to frustrate the will of the people because they did vote for the ordinance, but to assure we have the process correct.
Of course. And I, I think it's absolutely, you know, appropriate for the Board of Finance to ask questions. I think it's absolutely appropriate for, for folks to, to come to us and ask for advice. You know, let's, let's be honest, something like ARPA, this is really the first time this is, this has ever happened at this scale. And I think there are frankly, part of the trouble is 100% you know, answers when, you know, frankly, we usually go to case law, right? I'll say, well, let's see what's happened with previous issues that have come up like this. Well, there's not a whole lot of case law on funding of this size at this level with federal state interaction. What you've got is you're looking at a bunch of state statutes and federal statutes and maybe analogous cases. But finding something on point for this kind of issue is difficult, but
Right, covering new ground.
Right, we're certainly covering some new ground. So I think we look at analogous cases and analogous statutes to guide us. I think we look at, well, how did this process start? And if we hadn't done town meeting, I'd say we'd have a problem, right? But I think that because we went to the town meeting, and that is our established way of governance, that is pretty unique to Willington, right? There's, there's not a lot of other places that just have a town meeting and don't have a charter. So we're, we are unique in that sense. So a lot of the ways that we do things and the rules that apply to us are different from other folks. So we're always going to be doing things a little bit differently, which is one of the things that makes the town so wonderful. But it also makes things a little bit sticky, you know, which is, and so trying to navigate through this, it's looking at state statutes that are analogous, it's looking at federal statutes that are analogous and say, okay, since we do things a little bit differently, what is the first principle that we need to establish here? And the first principle is, did we, was this duly authorized by our legislative body? And the answer there is absolutely yes. So moving forward from that, everything that we're doing is to effectuate the will of our legislative body, right? And so we are on safe ground because that is what we're doing, right? If there's a check or a balance that we need to, to work out with the Board of Finance, that's, that's, that's a different animal, right? We can, there are opportunities there for the sides for everybody to work together to make sure that the money's being spent in a way that's in accordance with the taxpayer will. But at the end of the day, we, you know, we, we did this properly, and everything that we do needs to flow from that.
Okay. Thank you. Other board members with questions? Stephanie?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, I don't, I don't think anyone's in disagreement about the intent, intent of the ordinance. I voted for it too, and, and saw it as sort of an unfettered way to deal with the ARPA money. But when I was looking at what you sent today and, and reading over that on page three, where it does lay out the wording in the ordinance, it doesn't say anything about appropriating or authorizing spending. That's, that's what kind of, that's, that sort of, I wish that language was in there because it did pass with the idea of this. But it says, you know, A, B, you know, be the grant administrator for the funds, B, develop a multi-year spending plan, C, encourage, facilitate, and solicit input, D, educate the public, E, identify projects among categories, follow procurement procedures, and F, B, that the commission will be responsible for appropriate use of funds. It never says authorized spending. And that, that's what, that's what hitched me up. And I'm, can you comment on, you know, if that will be interpreted as if appropriating, you know, funds and, and spending is actually in there somewhere?
Can I comment what it does say? And I don't believe it's in here, that it begins with, this is hereby established as a municipal American Rescue Plan Act Commission created for the town of Willington to manage the dispersment of funds.
Which, where is that?
Right. That's the stat in the actual ordinance.
Oh, this isn't the actual
That is the opening line of the actual ordinance.
Yeah, you know, I'm sorry, I should have included the whole thing I was trying to.
Okay, yeah, because I don't, I don't have a copy of the actual ordinance.
So I think that appropriate, we have the word appropriate at the back and dispersment in sort of the mission statement. I think that, that certainly clarifies. I'm not sure how we would appropriately disperse if we couldn't appropriate.
No, it sure, it sure makes sense to have that there, but I just didn't, I didn't see that in the list of duties.
Yeah, no, I, I wasn't trying to, I was just trying to not put the whole thing in there, but
Okay. Thank you.
Any other board questions for Attorney O'Donnell? Pete Tanaka?
Hi, Ryan.
Hey, Christine, and also I'll get you.
Under normal appropriations in, in the town of Willington, we, we go to town meeting for anything over $10,000. Should we still be doing that as that's normal dispersment? Or should we ignore that because we now have a town ordinance, which I, as everybody else has noted, that they voted to get, or I, I want to note that I voted again.
Yeah. Pete, that's, Peter, that is a great question. But no, I, I think that this is, I'd say extra contractual, but there's no contract. It's, it's, this is certainly outside of the, of the typical appropriations process. My understanding is that the $10,000 would be taxpayer funds that are being expended through the normal process, and that the $10,000 is put in place to guard. And I don't want to go too far because I'm, I'm not that familiar with it. But my understanding is sort of from a rudimentary basis that, that that is a safeguard for taxpayer funds that are being spent through the normal budget process. These are federal funds that are coming from an external process that is distinct and separate from the normal expenditure process. So our normal expenditure rules wouldn't, would, would not apply. Different ideas and different purposes here.
All right. So this is, we're using the normal process, but this isn't normal. So we're not using the normal process. I'm sorry, I didn't follow your logic. And secondly, I'd just like to point out that these are taxpayer funds, they're just not Willington collected taxpayer funds, they're federal taxpayer collected funds.
As a lawyer, it's normally my job to be as obtuse as possible, Peter, you know this. So I will try, I'll try to, I'll try, I'll try to back it up a little bit, right? My perspective on it is that that is the normal process for the, for the budget appropriations, you know, that, that's, that's how we normally do things. Now, Pro- you know, that, that's, that's how we normally do things. Now, I'm only talking about the normal process being, you know, how do we write checks? Which I think is different from, this is our budget process. I, I see those as two different things, right? Um, they're related, but they're not one in the same. Um, we're not, uh, we're not engaging, and we're not making contracts here that, um, that tether the town long-term to expensive projects with taxpayer money. Um, we're not doing, I guess, some of it hasn't been decided yet. But what we're not doing is, this is not the typical, you know, budget process. This is something outside of that process. Um, I think, and that, that's why we had to go to town meeting in the first place, right? If this was the normal process, we would have just gone through the normal process, but it's not, so we went to town meeting. I think once you have a new ordinance, that's a clear signal that this isn't business as usual. Um, at least that would be my perspective on it. Um, you know, if it was just a normal expenditures, why did we go to town meeting?
Uh, I, 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 I'm understanding your thought process, I, I'm just, uh, reminded of that final scene from Red October where we've taken off all the safeties and, and now we've killed off. That's all I'm saying. We, we, we've removed that last safety of the town meeting for over ten thousand dollars.
I, I, I understand your point, um, and, and I, I don't wanna say, you know, well, what's done is done, but, um, you know, to some extent, I would say that maybe the tax, maybe the folks who voted for it, and I understand that you did not vote for it, but maybe the folks who voted for it didn't see it in quite, you know, well, well, I really liked that analogy. Um, I, maybe they had a different point of view on it, and that's why they voted the way that they did, but the bottom line is they did vote the way that they did.
Okay, Mike, I'm done. Thank you very much, Brian.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Pete. Christina?
Uh, well, first I just wanted to thank Ryan for being here because, um, as the chairperson of the ARPA Commission, it's great to hear you explain it. Um, I think you've explained some things uh, to me, at least, like, that gives me some comfort in moving forward, because, because I personally had some hesitation of, um, it just feels very strange, um, to be able to, to do, to do, to operate this way, because it is so very different from what we are used to doing, and, um, I think we have built in some ways to, to get, um, public input, but but just thinking about what Peter was saying, one of the things is, the things over ten thousand dollars, like, we have one expenditure that's two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. That normally would go through a, a town meeting, um, and depending on, on the interest, the public interest in it, it, it could potentially be a controversial thing, or maybe something that is sort of a no-brainer that everyone gets behind, and it, it's not anything to, to get too
Sure.
Too upset about, but, um, but the, the fact is, like, that could happen, people could, a lot of people could have, um, things to say and opinions about it, and we don't have a way, we can hear their voice, and we can hope that the people on the ARPA Commission will listen to the will of the people, but in, at the end of the day, uh, it, from what I'm hearing you say, is the commission does not have to necessarily, um, do what is perceived to be the majority of people in towns' will.
Well, so I, I think, Christine, I think there's two sort of very interesting tracks there. The first is the use of the money, right? Well, the way the money is, is gonna be used has to be in accordance with ARPA. Right, with, they've laid out guidelines and definitions and a whole, um, you know, regulatory scheme for where the money can and can't go. Um, so I think the first question is, are we spending the money in a way that's appropriate for ARPA? I mean, that, that's really sort of, that's kind of like the, the bigger threshold issue of, you know, wh- where is the town gonna have exposure and liability? If we're not doing things right, and frankly, where, where I want the focus to be is, are we spending the money the way we're supposed to be spending it? Right? I mean, that's, that is the number one thing. Um, and so I think there are built-in safeguards, um, to begin with. Now, there might be a different, there might be an argument over how the money should be spent by the, by, by the taxpayers, right? But I think the real question is, are we spending it in a way that the feds aren't gonna show up with auditors in a year or two and say, you guys misuse your ARPA funds? That, that to me, that, that is the threshold issue, right? And every discussion should begin with, are we spending the money in a way that, not necessarily that makes everybody happy, although that would be nice, but I can tell you, cuz we're, we're sort of talking about, um, and, you know, Mike before, I didn't mean to imply that, that, that we were consciously making a problems, right? But that I think we're sort of missing the forest from the trees. We have to adhere with the guidelines of how the money can be spent that have already been established, right? Cuz if we don't do that, we wanna talk about liability to the town, that's where the liability comes from. Is it when the feds come back and say, huh, these ARPA funds were misused, that's a problem, right? If people in town don't agree with how the money is being spent, I think is an issue of concern, but it shouldn't be the overriding issue. The first focus should be is, are we adhering to the guidelines established by ARPA? Second question becomes, once we answer that threshold question, if people feel like the commission is not representing the will of the people, I'd say then you might face another town meeting. Um, it's not like there's no recourse if folks feel like ARPA Commission's out of control. Um, we just demonstrated by establishing it, uh, that, that's how we do it. And if there is an issue with how it's being, of how the commission is handling itself, um, I'd say there's a built-in fix there. Now, is that gonna make everybody happy? No, cuz every, you know, every time that we don't like what ARPA does, are we gonna run to a town meeting? But, you know, it's not like if, if it becomes a completely rogue organization, and Christina, you just, you know, you're, you're just dictator for life of the ARPA Commission, that there is no
And I don't want to be.
I don't think anybody wants to be, right? You know, how do we, so, so I, I think that, that is sort of the threshold question is, are we putting the town at risk by spending the money in a way it's not supposed to be spent? We check that box, yes, we're spending it appropriately and properly, then we should take the next step. And if people have concerns, it can't be, well, I don't like how the ARPA money's being spent. I, I, I don't think that's, that's not like a legal question, it's a town politics question. Well, we don't like how the money's being spent. Okay, um, but no one's ever gonna be happy with, you know, not everyone's gonna be happy with how the money's spent. Um, there's gonna be disagreements, and I think our primary legal obligation is to follow the guidelines set by the federal government of how we can spend this money.
Okay, agree. And we, and we do, we do have a good process for that part, for sure.
Other board members? Questions, comments? Thank you, Attorney O'Donnell. It was good to have you here to clarify some of that stuff and being able to go back and forth, interact directly.
Thank you, and, and I, I don't view this as a, you know, one-off process. Other questions and concerns may come up that we can work together to sort of solve again. We're sort of, you know, we're in um, uncharted territories, you know, here be monsters, we're on the edge of the map. Um, and I think that there's no problem with continuing to ask questions as a process unfolds.
Okay.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, um, Christina, we also had, um, some, we had some work in the meantime to clear up, um, how some things would be funded between the ARPA and the regular budget. Do you wanna do that now, or do you wanna do it in budget discussion?
Um, yeah, well, I'll, I'll touch on it now, just so everyone is, is ready, um, when we get there, I guess. Um, the, the first one, and, and everyone on the board of finance should have gotten it, um, an email I saw just a little while ago, um, that went out this afternoon, um, about human services and just rethinking the, the, the original request to the ARPA Commission was to fund, uh, an increase for, uh, both the director and the assistant over the next three years, the, these increases that included, um, a, a big change in the job responsibility of the assistant, which, um, added hours, um, and added to the overall cost of it. And the way it was, um, presented was to fund for the ARPA Commission to fund seventy-five percent of that total cost in year one, fifty percent in year two, and twenty-five percent in year three, and it, it was just, I couldn't under- wearing both a, a board of finance and an ARPA hat, um, at the same time, it was really hard for me to, to think how we would do that, and also the fact that the ARPA Commission doesn't know what the board, can't, can't tell the board of finance how to, how to, what to do, and the board of finance can't even tell itself what to do from year to year to year. So we, um, we had an issue there, so, um, basically Donna ran some numbers of a second solution, which works out to be very similar numbers, but actually to the good for the operating budget, which is to do, just do the year one increases for both the director and the eight hours of the assistant, um, as if this, the extra hours weren't being added in, um, for year one, and with, with the, the increase, um, there, and
The operating budget?
In the operating budget, so you'll see it when we get to the human services budget, that I think it's actually a little bit less than what it was gonna be when we were paying twenty-five percent of it. Um, and then for ARPA to then look at that, at the extra position for the assistant, which is, uh, to be the senior center coordinator for twenty-two hours a week, to have that be a, a separate standalone project that ARPA would potentially fund, so, um, so that's the change there, and that's what we'll be seeing tonight, and, um, the other one was the, um, the second ambulance for Wellington One, which, um, uh, I'm trying to think of where we're at with that exactly, so.
I think, um, I think that's probably, uh, so I think what was talked about, and this goes to what you just talked about also, was the guidance from the board of finance. Not create ongoing expenses through ARPA, the, the board of finance, and thus the people can't approve. Um, and so I think, so, well, on the solution with the, um, human services, I think that worked out great to make a clearer demarcation between operating budget and the special project that ARPA is funding, which is those extra hours. I think, I understand why it was done the other way, to ease into the budget. It was a, it was a smart tool for easing it into the budget. But with this gray area of mixing ARPA and, well, I don't know if it's a gray area, but with this difficulty of understanding the mix between ARPA and the operating budget, being able to separate them, put a clearer line between them, I think in the end was more in alignment with the guidance the board of finance had issued on binding guidance that they issued saying, please help us to not create um, a downstream commitment. Um, the budget, that we have no way to have the townspeople approve, um, because it would be any year that they're not approving. Um, so I think it works out good that way, and then I think ambulance, we probably should talk about in budget discussion. Does that make sense? Or I'm not sure where you
Yeah, I mean, as, as far as, you know, with my ARPA hat on, um, where the ARPA Commission is with it, is, it is on the agenda for Monday night for the public hearing. Um, and it, um, could potentially be acted on, on Monday night, um, but, you know, that's, that's where we're at. That's, that's the, the status of fate, I guess.
And you're bringing that up because that is, that was talked about as possibly being an ongoing program also, by
Right.
Can I just make a comment? Christina presented a, a, a newer look at, um, the human services, um, costs. Uh, while I, I certainly, um, appreciated the outside-the-box thinking and another way of thinking, it does bring down the operating budget. The one thing I did ask, um, and I'll ask this officially of ARPA, is that we, um, not completely authorized, but keep earmarked dollars for that senior center position, um, as long as we can in ARPA, in the event that, um, once it's been established and we can see what that role does, if that does become something that we, um, put into the normal operating budget, that we could then phase it into so that the pain is a little bit less on the taxpayer all at once, and Christina had agreed to that. So phasing in that one position after the year, like, take another look at it, only, ARPA only authorizing one year um, the first time, and then being able to take a look at it and, and taking some data as to what was done, uh, once the position had been established.
That also gives us some time to test drive ARPA a little bit more, and, and with the public process and all that. Okay. Um, anything else? Board members, questions on the ARPA update?
Oh, and the, the only other thing I would add is that we, since our last meeting, um, there have been more requests that have come in. I'd say there's five or six new requests, um, and the public can see these requests at any time, um, and I'll, I'll remind people how to do it. You, um, you go to the online permitting system tab on the town website, and when you're, when you get there, you'll get a search bar, and you type in ARPA and search, and you'll see all of the projects there listed from one to, I think there's twenty-four of them listed now. And, um, we are keeping track of those on the backend. Um, each, each project has a number, and um, we will be receiving them formally at a meeting, then we hear it, and then we recommend it being heard at a public hearing. And then there's a potential to act, um, so that's, um, we're just gonna keep going with this project, process, and for as, how long as it takes.
Can also get to that, uh, software, um, request form from the ARPA Commission page. So you can get to it from the main page or the ARPA Commission page.
Okay, thank you. Any, uh, board questions, comments for the, uh, ARPA update? Okay, uh, moving on to budget discussion. I believe where we were, um, last, uh, time, I believe where we were last time, uh, when we left the last meeting, we were at two, uh, point two mil increase roughly. Um, Donna has continually, like, every couple of days, updated numbers as things have tightened up and information comes in. Um, and also, um, I'd like to draw in, even though it's also in new business where we may have to act on it, it's important for the budget discussion that we talk about Moose Meadow Road. Um, Erica, I don't know if you would like to comment on that now, um, tell us what you think the cost is gonna be, contingency, things like that, how we might
Yeah, so the board of, um, selectmen didn't, uh, vote formally, cuz we didn't have a, a complete total at the time of our last meeting, but they did ask me to come to you with some costs, and we had at that time looked at two, only two vendors. Um, so we had two quotes, but they were both state-approved vendors. We did ask Troy to get us a third quote, he's in the process, um, but he is off this week. So, um, when, from the two that we looked at, one was a fixed price for the entire job. The other, um, was estimated cost, and the final cost would depend on, um, actual slips, so the actual tonnage when they did the work. So at the time, the board of selectmen was leaning towards a fixed cost for the project, which was two hundred, just over two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Um, in addition to that, uh, Troy has given us a cost analysis on the work that Public Works would do to install guard rail, um, and to do, take care of drainage. So just for your information purposes, the entire project would, um, be from the intersection of Turnpike Road and Moose, Moose Meadow Road, it would be reclaimed for approximately thirty-nine hundred feet. After reclaiming, a one-and-a-quarter inch overlay would be applied for roughly fourteen hundred feet. The remaining nine hundred feet would be reclaimed, and then the whole road would be paved with three and a half inches of fresh asphalt. Um, this, the drainage, um, includes replacing, um, pipes, sixty feet of twenty-four inch pipe, um, sixty feet of eighteen inch pipe, and sixty feet of fifteen inch pipe. Along with the piping, three hundred and eighty-seven feet of guard rail would need to be installed. Um, and there would need to be, um, new tops installed on the existing catch basins, along with adding three catch basins and five hundred feet of underdrain, and all of that work would be done by DPW. So in that cost would be, um, uh, the cost to rent an excavator, because Troy didn't feel like they could do all of that work, uh, successfully with the, the backhoe. So that brings our total cost to So that brings our total cost to just over two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. I think it's important that we have some contingencies in this project. As we know, um, cost of goods is is changing um, in some cases uh, daily, if not weekly. Um, and not knowing uh, when exactly we've moved forward with this. So I did some uh, cost estimates for contingencies, whether we did a ten, twelve or fifteen percent contingency fee. At the maximum, that would bring the entire project um, to just about three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. And we would um, we would be coming to you separate from the budget. So I know you want to have this as an overall budget discussion, but we're not looking to add this into the budget. I think it's important that the repairs be done sooner, not later. The only thing that's um, holding us up besides getting quote information is that asphalt plants are not open at this point.
Okay, so what you're thinking it, so it's really twofold about funding it. It would be doing in the current fiscal year first, but it's not in the budget planning for after July one. And the source of the income, the source of the funding. Um, I did talk with Donna a little bit about this. We talked about whether there was money in capital reserve. Um, so is that what your thought was that we would, uh, I think there's a six hundred thousand balance right now in capital reserve?
So I would defer to Donna if you, uh, and she have had those discussions as to whether or not it comes from uh, the general fund. Or the capital reserve fund um, ta- if taking it from the capital reserve would have an impact on the CIP plan as a whole. What I do know is that we don't have an additional three hundred and forty-three thousand in the operating budget.
Right, so um, as Donna and I discussed that the um, with the current six hundred thousand dollar balance in capital reserve. Um, it would not create any crisis for capital reserve in the short term, like in the next fiscal year or anything like that. But if you look at the last fund analysis she did, the long range analysis, it would eventually catch up to us. So in in years further out, it will eventually become a budget impact um, to refill that money. Um, but it could be done without an effect on taxation in the short term. If it came out of fund balance, that would potentially change our calculations that we might be doing tonight. Uh, because our percentages would change using our our available fund balance to start with would go down, obviously. So anything we take from the fund would lower the percentage remaining. So um, I guess that's why it gets important for tonight's conversation.
It doesn't, and I certainly would defer to Donna for where she believes the best source uh, of funding and what would best benefit uh, the town.
Right, so, but we should be figuring on basically three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Um, at most, uh, again, um, of the two quotes that we currently have. You know, we could go, our our procedures are three quotes or a state approved vendor. Um, Troy went with two state approved vendors, so we've met that threshold. Um, and the 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 cost of the fixed um, cost of the project, no matter what the variables were. Current at this time would be uh, just over two hundred and fifty-six thousand. When you add in the work by Public Works and a fifteen percent contingency. Um, would would bring us to three forty-two, nine sixty-five. So I I think three fifty might uh, you know, that would certainly be more than a fifteen percent contingency, but.
Well, it's just a round number for planning, it's a round number for planning right now.
Yep, and I'm not opposed to that. Um, again, the contingency is only if the cost in um, the public works um, portion of the project. Was varied, um, the.
Correct, the contractor got surprised by something we could, they could come back and say this is in our scope.
Right, but as of now, that fixed cost um, is still good.
Okay.
Is there variable, I mean, given when these bids came in, the two we have already, is there a further variable in, you know, petroleum costs? Given this nature of this work, I mean.
Not currently Stephanie, but I will say Troy has not been in this week. So if any information has come to him, I wouldn't have that until he's back in his office on Monday.
Thank you, Erica.
You're welcome.
Okay, so budget discussion. Um, Donna, if you are willing, could you comment on what we just talked about? As far as where you think the best fund source is for this Moose Meadow project?
Yes, I think the reserve fund is the best choice.
The capital reserve as we discussed?
Yes, yes.
All right, and my numbers were basically right, correct? I think it was six hundred is the budget and, I mean, six hundred is the balance.
That sounds right, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yep, so I just want to mention to you that the CIP, and you'll remember too, from being on the committee. That we took out the funding for the roof replacements. So um, you know, that's why we have this money in there now. And we moved out all of the money for the education projects. You know, we wouldn't have had this last year when we had money set aside for the roofs, yes.
Right.
But now that's off the books.
Right, well, and and wherever we decide this should happen, the fact of the matter is you sometimes have to deal with the emergency that's in front of you. And then how to deal with the other emergencies?
Yes.
Yes, Pete.
Um, I I have two things. One, uh, we heard Michelle that presented speak at the beginning on on uh, deferring maintenance. So that it costs us more in the long run. And I think those roofs that we're taking this money from, is that deferred maintenance to which she speaks? It's going to cost us more in the long run if we don't fix those roofs. And and it kind of upsets me a little that we haven't fixed those roofs. Secondly, I I understand the damage to to uh, Moose Meadow Road. I went up and looked at it myself, but it it is significant. However, declaring roads needing to be repaired as an emergency rather than going to CIP like the rest of the roads. And in, and then taking it off budget tends to uh, make me more than a little nervous. I think that we should figure out how some way of getting this into our budget so that we can budget for it. And uh, instead of just taking it out of uh, capital reserves, we should be budgeting at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, other board thoughts? Um, all right, so we're not making a decision on anything with Moose Meadow Road right now. It's it's discussion. It it, it's critical that we see if or how it contributes to the rest of our budget discussion. Um, if for the sake of conversation, we're saying it's coming out of capital reserve. That would allow us to move into the rest of the budget discussion and have it not affect the mill rate this coming year. It does not resolve the question, as you mentioned, P, of what we do with school roofs or anything like that. It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't speak to future plans. But it does repair Moose Meadow Road without affecting taxes in the coming year. Um, it will eventually, it is. Financially, it is a can kick down the road though, because eventually it will, that money will need to be replaced. Whether it's for roofs on the school or if it's for um, replenishing capital reserves. For um, making payments on a new school down the road or whatever. We are going to have to catch back up to it, but we also have a road that needs to be repaired.
Mike, did, could, did we, did we approach the, the company that's under construction? Yet, or is that, I know that's not the issue right before us, but I just wondered if there's any.
I will tell you that the the. The liability is not on um, the construction company. Certainly, we don't have weight limits on those roads. Um, it is the town's responsibility to maintain a road adequate of travel. So there were discussions, um, but the the responsibility is on the the town to to adequately. Um, prepare our roads and maintain our roads.
As far as this uh, happening again and again, though, I mean, are you saying there is no limit or there's no posted limit?
There's no posted limit.
So we do have limits, we just haven't posted it.
No, I don't believe we have limits for those roads, so there's, there's no.
The limits are, it's state law, it's governed by state law.
Okay.
Which would essentially be eighty thousand pounds unless the vehicle has permits to go over. Um, like a a tri axle dump truck could have axle permits to go to maybe, I don't know, eighty-three thousand pounds. And as long as the road is not posted, then there, I believe they're allowed to run that because they have the state permit that allows it.
And this was a separate from the actual project that's happening. Um, the the, the project and and the new business, uh, you know, contracted with someone to remove the debris. And once that is done, that part of the project is separate. Um, and um, had we known this would be an option, we may have, we would have discussed in in discussions like we had on Pulster Road and and other detours. A potential different uh, route. But what that doesn't negate is the fact that this road was already in need of um, some repair. And Troy had some plans um, to be able to do some work on it. Um, it just, it wasn't in 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 this current budget and it certainly did more damage um, than we would imagine.
Okay, um, shall we start digging into the budget? I think we probably should. To be um. So we, so we have this sort of split between old business and new business discussion. And then we go to potentially doing appropriations in new business. Those really sort of morph into each other. Um, so I guess we'll start with discussion at this point. We just won't do any appropriations until we declare that we've moved to new business. So um. Donna, are you ready to put your um, spreadsheet, to share your spreadsheet where we do the calculations?
Yes.
Okay. And I have checked, it does have multiple participants allowed, so hopefully you can. Okay. So board members, you have anything in particular that you've been thinking about, something you want to start looking at, start?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want me to just start saying what I want to say or?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, let's get some discussion going.
I I'm I'm sorry, I I I didn't know where. Problem with these Zoom meetings is I get very little feedback and so I have trouble communicating.
Pete, yeah, two thumbs up, go.
Okay, um, I I I did go over this sheet and I think it's the same sheet that Donna had up. I I had to print it because paper and too many devices are starting to bother me. Uh, I've noticed that in the budget, we have a a number of different things that stand out. The first thing is very large budgets that have very small percentage increases that have very large dollar increases. Then we have very large percentage increases with very low dollar increases. And so we need to separate some of those out. Uh, so the topics I wanted to start with was the the uh, K eight education. Where I did, I do want to say that I was really impressed with the board of uh, education on on how they. They worked on those numbers and I do understand that ninety-seven percent of their uh, budget is contractual. However, in in that contractual is their their uh. Budget for employee salaries, which is entirely under, not entirely under their control, but the percentage increase is under their control. And uh, with a two point seven five percent increase. The fact that they got to one point two percent, six in percent increase in their school budget is significant. But I want them to, I would really like to ask the board of finance to think about where that money's coming from. When they do give those increases. If they think we can give, you know, increases to in payroll and just ask for more money from the taxpayer. I I don't think that that's probably a good way to think about it. It's a one point two percent, six percent increase despite a ten percent decrease in the number of students. Now, I understand that that it's contractual. I I'm just, the thing that brought my attention to this is I attended the last board of ed meeting. Where they said, once they give us the money, we don't give it, even if we don't spend it, we can only spend it on education, et cetera, et cetera. And it sounded a a a little too uh, smug by half. And so I I'd like to see a small cut in in that. Uh, the auditor budget, uh, I I'm sorry. The uh, revenue collector budget, that kind of percentage increase in one payroll position over one year. Seems a bit extreme to me. Um, I I'd like to see a cut of uh, I. I'm sorry, I I may have done my my calculations on the wrong line. But uh, increase that that, that payroll increased to about seven percent instead of twenty-one percent. Uh, I I've never heard of anybody getting a twenty-one percent increase in in salary over one year. Um. Senior center operations, um, an eighteen percent increase. I think that was what Christina was talking about with some of the ARPA funds. I, and I see Erica shaking her head, no, so.
You know, I can tell you what that's made up of, an increase uh, in heating oil. The significant increases are an additional twenty-four uh, thirty-eight in heat, heating oil with the the new cost of heating oil. And almost three thousand dollars um, for work on their uh, small section of um, parking lot.
All right, I.
That would be a one-time increase. I I'd like to think that the fuel at this exorbitant rate would be a one-time um, increase. But that's what the bulk of that, um, those, that six thousand one hundred fifty-one dollar increase is.
Okay, it's the parking lot, we may have to cut the parking lot because of the increase in fuel. I don't, I don't, I don't think we just say the fuel costs more, so we give them everything. I think it's, it it may be times it, it's a, it's a several, the other thing I wanted to talk about at the very beginning was that. We are, as a town. Uh, having a problem with 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 inflation. Our spending is going up, our oil is going up, everything is going up. However, for our taxpayers, the same is true. Their ability to pay taxes is going down as their personal costs are going up. Not only is the town paying more for fuel, but uh, each one of our taxpayers is is trying to fill their oil tank at home. And trying to fill that fuel. So I I think it's important for us to to to, you know. Be very careful here with our, with our budget. So I I'd like to see the senior center operation tell the ten percent, which would be, still be an increase of uh. Uh. It would make their line item thirty-six thousand or thirty-seven thousand dollars as opposed to thirty-nine thousand seven hundred. Public Works, ten point six two percent. I, I. Living on Mason Road, I understand the three problem. The insect kill is unbelievable, our roads that as we we just heard from Erica have problems. We need to increase that budget, but once again, I I'd like to hold it to ten percent, cut it by twelve uh, twelve thousand dollars. Uh, and then uh. Parks and Rec, fifteen point five percent, that's a twelve thousand dollar increase. I'd like to to uh, change that from ninety-six, five twenty-two to ninety-one, eight eighty-eight. That would bring it down to ten percent. And then the transfer to the library, that's only an eight point seven one percent increase. But I'd like to bring it down to six percent, make it more realistic with with inflation. That would make that uh, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. That'd be one of those ones where the increase in percentage is smaller, but the increase in dollars is large. Thank you.
All right, thank you for all of those. Um, since you got the conversation started, P. I had, I had concern about the twenty-three percent for the revenue collector. I do, I do understand what the board of selectmen have presented, that there was an issue with. Um, sort of a pay parity between the collector and the assistant. Um, I, that can be interpreted a few different ways. Um, the assistant overall makes a lot less money, but um, apparently dollars per hour makes better money. Um, I have been in situations as a manager like that where the people who worked under me did make more. Um, I think that the revenue collector's job probably deserves, the job itself deserves better pay. Um, but I also can't. I, I just, I can't imagine the idea of twenty-three percent. Um, so. I had, Pete, I think you had had seven. I think I had factored it at, in my mind at ten percent. Um, but anyway, for conversation's sake, that's where I was on that one. Um, I know. Want to chime in on these as we go over?
Yeah, Mike.
Go ahead.
The reason I went with, with seven instead of ten was because, uh. As, as you know, I'm a supporter of both our, our fire departments and, and last year I told Willington Fire Department one that I, I understood that. Their need, they're a life-saving, essential organization, and that I couldn't give them more than seven percent. And that to come back next year for another step. And, uh, I, I think that that may be a way to go, go seven, 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 and then, then they'd be right up to the level that where they want them now. It's just that we, we ease it in a little bit instead of just. That, that was what, where my thought was.
Okay. All right. Other board members thoughts or do you want to go over your own lists or what? Um, how do you want to proceed with this? Christina?
Um, I, I guess if we take them one by one, so. That's, that's probably the best. I don't know.
You mean like share the screen and sort of look at, look at this or?
Yeah, yeah, and go line by line and, and, um, like Pete just. Shared, um, a whole, a whole, all of his things. I have a list too, but I think it's. Probably if we just start with one thing, um, we can all say what we think about that thing and.
Donna, we need a different.
So too, I think we need a visual.
Looking at your email, Donna.
Okay, let me start over. Are you seeing, still seeing the email?
Seeing nothing.
Nothing.
That's it, we're done. Good night, everyone. Oh.
How about now?
Yes, we got it. Okay, um. So I didn't have anything in those first, that first group, line fourteen. I didn't have anything there. Does anyone else have anything in those, those first, uh, through line fourteen? If you do, just be, if you're a board member, just speak up because I can't see everyone with the screen share, so. All right, uh, let's scroll down a little, Donna.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. You're, you're going by the, the line number and I'm going by the, the zero, zero, one number there. Hang on a second, let me, uh.
Okay, we're, we're back to the top there, Pete.
Okay, good. Uh, we, oh, Selectman Budget, this is a different list than I have. I'm sorry.
Um, they're in a different order in this part of the process.
Thank you for that. It, it helps me so much.
That's the thing, my printouts don't, like, don't jive with it either, which is.
Yeah.
I just wish I had this one to have worked off of.
Yeah, this, this ends up, uh, lining up with how the, um. Motions are typically done, so they're in it, they're scrambled up into a different order, but. You can.
All right, I'm good through fourteen.
Okay. Let's scroll, Donna. Okay. Nothing critical, but Fire Marshal is one L. Marshall. Not that that saves us any money.
Thank you.
It saves us letters though. Only saves you money and Wheel of Fortune, yeah.
Um, just a question on the dispatch fees. How do we? How do we know that? Is there just like an invoice that comes to the town each year, Donna? Is that how that works?
Um, they send the, um, budget estimate. So there is a calculation that they send for budgeting.
Okay, so you get a, you get some sort of a letter that says your share of the cost of us doing business is this?
Yes.
Okay.
And do we, do we know how that compares?
It's a, um, it's done by population, I believe.
No, I meant, uh, I meant from this year's budget.
Oh.
Like, are we up quite a bit or? Kind of even?
Um.
Two thousand two hundred and forty dollars more.
Thanks.
There you go. Thank you. And then for some reason I don't have that sheet in front of me. All right, so, um. Do we have board questions in this area? Uh, um, I mean, we're not doing votes at this point, but let's. If there's a discussion or, or we keep moving and maybe we go back when we see the number at the bottom. Uh, Christina?
Well, I'm just trying to remember honestly. We have, like in this, the transfer out ambulance grant includes the. One, one lease payment for the, the new ambulance?
The ambulance grant, I believe, is salaries only.
So the other is, the re- the rest is strictly.
That's staffing. The ambulance grant is staffing.
Yeah, okay.
So the, um. So like lease payments show up in Fund seventeen, like for the ambulance you're talking about?
Yeah.
That shows up in Fund seventeen. Um, the maintenance on the ambulance vehicle itself shows up in the. Um, two thirty-two transfer out WFD one. In the, but, so this is just the employee costs.
Okay. And, and what is the percentage of that one is up, um, because?
I've, um, is it five point five or something like that? I'm trying to find the right sheet here.
I know, me too. I can't. Can't keep it all straight here on my screen.
I should probably throw some of this away. All right, well, why don't we roll down to some stuff that's been brought up? Let's look at, uh, Parks and Rec. Pete, you would.
Um, yes.
You had talked about Parks and Rec, right?
Yep, and my first question, uh, you just answered was, did we get down to Parks and Rec yet? Uh, Parks and Rec, fifteen point five five percent. I, I, I've had feedback in the past that I'm wrong on this, but I still haven't changed my mind. That the town has several essential and, and less essential. Seriously need the thing, but not essential. And, and I've put Parks and Rec in that. I'd like to hold that to ten percent and move that to ninety-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. That would be ten percent as I figured it and my math is. Suspect at best, so.
All right, so for the sake of discussion, can you put that in there, Donna?
Yes.
Christina?
Um, I think where we last left off, like when this was presented to us, it didn't include camp. Or it, a very, very scaled back version of camp and also, um. Paul's Pond was going to, to just be, there wouldn't be any revenue coming in from House Pond, but there also wouldn't be any lifeguards.
I saw an advertisement, I saw an email, I think yesterday, advertising for lifeguards, so I'm assuming that plan changed?
Yeah, so if that plan changed, then this budget might not be accurate. Then I don't, I don't know. I, I honestly can't remember.
All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna make some.
I think Alan's on the meeting, but they are using lifeguards, right? So we, one of the things that came up was we went back over and looked at the contract. I, I asked Alan to pull that out because I believed, um, that wouldn't be permitted with the contract we have. And so they are using lifeguards. Um, but if I'm not mistaken, Donna, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe typically the transfer, um, out to Parks and Rec covers the administrative cost and the. Um, the rest of the revenue, um, covers the expenses in that department. Is that correct?
Yes, in the past, that was the way the budget was designed.
Okay.
That the transfer covers the salary. And the mowing of the fields.
Okay.
Oh, and they did, and that did go up. Right? That's not something that they have a lot of control over, so.
It's a contract and that's, that's already in place and so they have no control over that.
And how many dollars does that represent? Do you know? Of that thirteen thousand dollar increase, how much of that is mowing?
It looks like about forty-seven hundred dollars.
So, so I guess the question is, if we cut this by forty-six, thirty-four, forty-seven hundred. Making it. Uh, what, what, what does that do to their plans for the summer, um, and for the rest of the year? I don't, I don't know. If those are contractual.
You know, Christina, I, I, I don't know either. It's just that I, I, I'm looking at how much the town can afford to spend for Parks and Recreation. And I think a ten percent increase is, is significant. And I, I, that's, that's where I came up with that number. It still gives them a ten percent increase over last year. So that, we gotta, we gotta figure out something or. Our average taxpayer is going to be paying seven, more than seven hundred dollars a year more. And that doesn't even include, uh. In Moose Meadow Road, so.
Right.
I, 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 that, that's what has me worried and, and, and of, of products that. Uh, our services that our town provides, that, that's one where. If we can't provide it, that's, you know. It's hard. I, I, I'm not saying it's not hard.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm digging into items. Go ahead, Erica.
If it, I, I pulled up their budget and again, I don't know if Alan's on here, if he is willing to jump in. It looks like the administrative cost plus the contractual cost of the fieldmate, uh, the, the field contract. Would be ninety-three, three, twenty-five to cover those costs.
That's, I thought it was more than that.
So, you know, after that, Peter, if you're, you know, saying it's less important, you know, people aren't coming to these programs, how are we paying our contracted? Costs. So, you know, there's, there's certainly a concern that there is. There's a cost to, you know, having a department and the majority of this is payroll, payroll taxes. That contract, uh, and, and just some minor, um, expenditures, um, to operate the Parks and Rec office.
I, 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 I'm not disagreeing with you, Erica. I'm just saying that, that I, if. If we can't mow a field or, or don't pick somebody up with an ambulance, I, I'd rather pick somebody up with the ambulance.
Okay, well then I'll send the bill. We should send the bill for the contracted service to you. So, I, I mean, the town is obligated to pay for the contract that we have. If you think it's okay not to have it mowed, we have a contract. We can tell them not to come. We're still obligated to pay.
We, we, we signed a contract without the money in the budget then apparently. I, I, I don't know what to say. Go, you know, I, 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 I obviously don't have, have, have a. I have put one vote on this committee, but that's, that's my, um, input. And if somebody else has a different input, then by all means, let's do it.
So during this time that I'm not saying anything, I'm digging through to get the, to find. My, um, line items, so we can talk more about that. So I'm not ignoring everybody here. I'm just. Trying to find what I had on my screen and lost.
So that, you know, it, in, it's essentially that the nine, nine percent increase in dispatching is. Contractual, right? I mean, that's a bill we get delivered. That's how much that's gone up year over year. And it's a small, small amount, but still, you know.
Erica, do we have a municipal representative to that, um, county organization? I know some towns do.
What county organization?
That, that manages the, that oversees the dispatch center. So I'm guessing that's no, if you don't know about it.
Mike, can I jump in real quick?
Oh, sure.
Um, you, you do and it's, um, Dick Palmer is your municipal rep and then myself. And Chief Snyder both have a seat at the table.
Right. Okay, I just, I wasn't sure if we had, I know that some towns, and I thought it was available at all towns to have a municipal rep, so you're telling me it's Dick Palmer, so that answers.
Yes, it is Dick Palmer. It has been for many years.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yep.
Okay, I have my line item budget now. I just have to get to the right place. Erica, the, um, Parks and Rec line, individual lines aren't going to be in the, in the selectments.
Like, it was, you had, um, Alan had shared it with you and then you had sent it, because I just went to look for myself. You had sent it in an email on February. Uh, I'm sorry, yeah, on February first. So if that helps you locate an email.
That does, that does help me look for it, because I'm, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a quick question.
Go ahead.
Um, are there any monies that would be available through ARPA for Parks and Rec? Um, last time we had spoken with them, um, there were no requests at that time.
I believe they put in money for summer camp, for sure. They did, they, they did a, they just did in the last couple of days, a, um. A joint request with Human Services to help, um, do supplemental funding for summer camp and, um. There was another thing in there too, um. So.
Well, were, wasn't there stuff from CIP for the fields?
Well.
Or.
Yeah, there, there were.
Workout.
Previously, but they weren't really related to the operating budget.
Okay.
Um, it was more, um, putting lights in. That's one of the things that's on the list and. Putting a pavilion over the workout area and doing some drainage over in that area. Um, I can tell you, I can, I can look it up on, uh, on their website, but, um. It's.
I am, I don't know if anyone can hear me.
Yes.
Um, yeah, I've, we put in, uh, four requests, the, um, the drainage, the lights at the park. The, um. Uh, sorry.
Workout area?
Or, sir, yeah, the workout pavilion, but that was a CIP request. That got moved over to ARPA and then the, uh, help for the summer camp.
Yeah.
Okay. I have finally gotten back to it. Thank you, Erica, for the. For getting me back to that February first email. Okay. So looking over the line items of that budget. Starting from the top down, thirty-three percent increase, uh, well, two hundred and fifty dollars for the town office building mowing. Uh, and I think that's the field behind the town office building, right? The rec field.
Which, which one are you speaking about?
Uh, the first line says field maintenance town office building.
Uh, no, that, uh, that field maintenance TOB is basically to, uh, upkeep the actual baseball field part of it, you know, like.
That's what I meant. That's what I meant. Yeah, the, but the ball.
Yeah, and, and, uh, mowing that field itself, that one is called field contract. Uh, field contract ta- town or.
Yeah. Okay, I see that next. That went up by eighteen hundred and forty dollars there. And then field contract service for the schools went up fourteen hundred and eighty dollars.
And then the other, the other mowing bill is down, uh, in R R A C. It's R A C field contract.
Mm-hmm.
And that one was only a two hundred and eighty dollar increase.
Okay, I see that. Yep. Um, all right, would it help board members if I shared this so they can see it or what's, what are people's feelings? Do we want to move on a little, look at some other things and come back or what?
Yeah, go ahead and share it. I, you know, I think it's, uh, it's, it's hard not working off the same type of document, but yeah. Let's, uh, let's roll through some things.
Okay, standby. All right. So going to the top. Keep in mind, unlike some of our departments, this budget also has revenue down at the bottom too, so it's not just expense. Okay, people can see that.
Um, one thing that's just jumping out at me is that there are no salary increases factored into this. Like, um.
That is because, yep, Alan presented it with, with no salary increases and, um, I worked up a, because the salaries are not public, a like private worksheet, um, with the salaries on it.
Okay, so the number that we are looking at on the appropriation sheet?
Includes the salaries.
Increase, okay.
Yep. So if you scroll down, Mike, my number and what you have on the appropriation worksheet is ninety six thousand five hundred and twenty-two, which should be more than what Alan presented to you.
I'm, I'm getting there. It's scrolling slowly.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. He has ninety six oh seventy-one. Ninety six five twenty-two.
I have problems just taking it down to a certain percentage because, you know, on the appropriation sheet, because we don't we don't have that detail, the fact that we didn't what we were seeing didn't include those salaries.
Okay. Well, here's the thing, we're, right now, we're chipping away at a thousand dollars at a time or a couple thousand time, and I think if we look at where we really are budget-wise, I think we need to be chipping away hundreds of thousands.
I do too.
If we're, I, I think rough numbers, a mill is about four hundred and fifty thousand and if we're at two point two mills, we've got to find some bigger things. I'm not saying these don't deserve a look, but I think we've got to look at some bigger chunks to start getting us into range.
It feels like with the Moose Meadow thing and the unknown, uh, you know, town employee negotiation figure and, um, some of the other things that we've been hit with, all the oil increases and stuff that everybody's just kind of added to their existing budget increase requests. Um, it feels to me like, um, uh, we need to look at, at some of the areas of new spending, new programs, you know, new purchases that are significant. Um, and whether this is the right year to do that, given what's been thrown at us here.
Right. Um, Donna, could you bring yours back up and go down to where it calculates out the, um, like the fund balance percentages and the mill rate and all that? And I think, Donna, would you agree that the, that a mill is running around four hundred and fifty-ish thousand?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Agree with that.
So right now, we're seeing, uh, one point nine three with where we've worked to so far. So we've gained one, um, one hundredth of a mill or a tenth of it, whatever. Anyway, we didn't get far yet. So if we, I don't know that we've set a goal for where we want to be on the mills, but if we are right now at a two-mill increase, that means we're at a nine hundred thousand dollar change. So we've got to find some big dollars to, um, resolve that. Right now, Donna, I think you have just the three fifty-five something in fund transfer. Is that true?
That is true.
Three fifty-five oh two-three or something like that. I don't know where it is. Oh, there we go. Yep, on line seventy-five, was it?
Yes.
Yep, lines five. Uh, and that left us with, um, what sort of a percentage again? Do we remember where that left us?
With an eleven percent of unassigned fund balance.
Okay. If we took so if, uh, if we took another two hundred and twenty-five thousand of fund balance, um, could you plug that in the, another two hundred and twenty-five thousand? That would be basically half a mil from the fund balance. Okay, so that should drop us down to about one point five mil increase and should leave the fund balance in the tens somewhere. Ten percent or something like that?
So five hundred and eighty thousand. So, so it, it would be under, just under ten percent because five hundred and fifty thousand is ten percent.
Okay.
Six hundred thousand is nine point eight.
Okay, so it's around nine point nine percent rough of, um, and our goal is to be between eight and twelve. So, so we're just under the halfway, just under the middle of our goal. So we've got, uh, so we've got some choices, board. We've got to, we're either facing increasing taxes a lot or we're going to chip down the fund balance a little more or we're going to cut some expenses and I think I don't think we have a lot of fund balance left to play with.
Okay.
Christina?
Well, so what do, what do we think is raising taxes a lot? Um, and I, uh, if, from my perspective, we haven't on the one hand, we haven't raised taxes by significant percentages. Um, it's been fractions of percents for many years and last year was actually flat with a slight decrease. So from that perspective, we haven't raised taxes in a very long time. But from the other perspective, even I think a one percent increase is pretty substantial. Um.
One mil?
One, yeah, a one mil is still not, it's not, that's not minor by, by any means and, um, and then I do want, worry about what's coming down the road because either we're doing a big school project or we're, we're building a new school and either, and so I don't know, I'd like to see us not spending, not, not raising the taxes to a, a level that is going to have to then be raised again uh, over the next coming, coming years. So I just think we should be careful.
So, um, our big drivers, uh, were, you know, I'm on CIP and I'm a believer in what we did with CIP. I think we have to increase what we're doing for the town, but it is driving a lot of this. I think the, if I understand right, the three hundred and fifty-four thousand and something transfer, I think that's all money going into capital. And so maybe this is an area, um, that we can, maybe, maybe as much as I hate to pare back capital because I think we need to be expanding it. Um, maybe this is an area where we can cut, where we can actually find big enough dollars to make a difference.
I mean, last, last week I suggested and I'll, you know, jump in and put it out there again because it is a big item and I know, um, there's a lot of discussion about it. But it, you know, the second ambulance idea is a new program with questions about what the expense will be in an ongoing budget. Um, I think if we, if we thought of that in terms of, uh, and then we also have, you know, we're, we're trying to expedite the purchase of the main ambu- ambulance to replace one that's been problematic for, you know, the fire department for, you know, since the beginning, since someone, someone caused an accident with it. And, um, so I, I feel like if we, if the fire department were to consider doing something faster to replace that, you know, moving that to a proposal for ARPA and it's that, it fits that qualification of it's a replacement of emergency vehicle versus a new, a new, uh, you know, um, a new big purchase with, with cost impact down the road. Um, I think it just, um, it makes sense to really consider that, but the first, the main ambulance replacement into ARPA, take out the second ambulance because that's just, you know, right now when our population is going down, when, um, you know, the fire department's already established in their mutual aid stats that Wellington, um, you, you know, Wellington is, you know, doing calls for other towns that are, you know, two hundred and fifteen calls and, and what they're on the receiving end of is eighty-six calls to help people in Wellington. It's not, we're, we're definitely doing more than our share for mutual aid to keep that a, a reasonable program. And the only ones that are really doing more calls for us than we're doing for them is Yukon, which is the state entity, the rest are towns. We already know about the situation in Union. I feel like the, as far as the need goes in Wellington, and I'm not talking about, you know, answering all the, all the calls around towns around us necessarily. I think that just makes fiscal sense, whether it's something that we do in the next trench or, you know, in, of ARPA or, or sometime in the future. Um, that may be still viable, but I'm not persuaded that's the way to go in a year like this when all this stuff's getting thrown at us. And that would also have a positive impact on the CIP budget and the, you know, uh, the fifty thousand a year lease costs, um, would move that out of there, which would relieve CIP some. Um, I think there's other impacts that it would help.
Yeah, well, the, because it's Fund Seventeen, the way that would affect taxation would be to move that fifty thousand into like their salary line to reduce the salary, which would then affect drop taxation.
Maybe as a temporary thing, right? Like a, like not, not as a permanent thing to do to have Fund Seventeen finance salaries. Just sort of the this year kind of thing.
Well, right, and I don't think you want to actually reduce what their budget ask is because then in the next year would make it look like a huge increase, which is problematic.
I agree.
Um, will Chief Moore, uh, will honor your request to speak?
Um, just real quick, one, I wanted to echo the, the Fund Seventeen, the ambulance payment doesn't actually come off, it doesn't, it comes out of Fund Seventeen, so it doesn't show on the bottom line of Fund Seven, or on the capital improvements budget. Um, but adding another fifty thousand out of, I, I don't think it's wise. That fund was setting up for equipment replacement, not for payroll. That's why it was set up.
Well, it does say, and it does say in the contract that Fund Seventeen can be used for salary also, and we do some of it every year for salary.
We do every year, but I would hate to see fifty thousand go when we're trying to replace an ambulance. I understand the ARPA thing, but at the same time, um, we still strongly believe that that second ambulance is needed. Um, you know, Mike, I know I've had communications with you quite a bit this week and with, uh, Erica of not having an ambulance again. Even if we ordered a brand new ambulance today, we're still looking at eighteen to twenty-four months before we see a drop.
So, so, um, ev- everyone who's knowledgeable about what goes on here with the board and what goes on with the fire departments knows that I'm in a difficult position here, but um, with all due respect, Chief, um, this is the first time I'm going to say this publicly. I do work for a company that sells fire apparatus and ambulances and you can get an ambulance much faster than two years.
Okay.
You, you can, and you can get an ambulance a lot, you can get a decent ambulance a lot cheaper than three hundred thousand dollars too. Um, I was at the office yesterday, I checked. Our ambulances are running about eight to nine months and another example is University of Connecticut just ordered a brand new ambulance in the last couple of weeks and they're getting a type-three box ambulance for a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars without the power load stretcher because they're transferring a power load stretcher from the outgoing ambulance. Um, so I think there are opportunities here for us to lessen the impact on the taxpayers and still put you in good equipment. I think if ARPA is willing to go to two hundred thousand dollars, you can order faster, you can be in a rig in a year and, um, you can have a good brand new rig. I, I, I do agree that you've got a problem with reliability with this one. I just don't know how we, the, the amount of dollars that saves is significant. If we can, if we can buy an ambulance on ARPA for two hundred thousand dollars and save the three hundred thousand impact on Fund Seventeen, that's huge. That is huge. Fee, I'm muting you.
I, I, Mike, this is news to us. Everybody that we've reached out to and it, it would have to go out to bit. Um, is what's told us the eighteen to twenty-four months. That's two different vendors that we've always used. We're not opposed to looking at something new or a different company. Um, but nobody's, you know, even the last time I had conversations with people at Yukon, they were still telling us eighteen months. So, um.
So according.
I, I, that's, yeah, I don't have a response on that.
According to them last week, it's one seventy-five. I talked to the captain who did the order. It was one seventy-five and it was nine, nine months to a year. Um, type-three, van nose, box body. And one thing you guys may or may not like is everyone's going away from diesel now. That's part of the reason they're cheaper and that's part of the reason they can get them faster.
It, it's not that we were against that. The problem is the town doesn't have fuel pumps or strictly stuck at whatever the, going to a gas station to get gasoline.
Right, right.
Which is a huge expense and we're at the mercy of whatever the, you know, consumer price is.
Sure.
That's why we've always given diesel.
But if it's a hundred thousand dollars or a six-month or a year savings in getting the ambulance, we might, unfortunately, might be in that position. Uh, board members, more discussion, uh, where, other ideas for where we can find big chunks of money? Christina?
Um, well, I was, you know, of course, the, the big, the big ticket item in CIP is the, the dump truck, um, which I don't have it in front of me. I think it was two hundred and.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, yeah, um, which we, I know we had coming out of the reserve fund, which is one of the reasons why the reserve fund is so high and, um, and maybe if, if we push that out one year, but in a way, but put a hundred, at least a hundred, maybe even a hundred and fifty in, into reserve and have that be a, a constant thing that we do every single year. So, so that we could have the funds to buy a new truck every two years, which is basically the replacement schedule that we're on now. If we're going to be replacing a new truck. We have five trucks and we have to replace them every ten years and that's. New truck, if we, we have five trucks and we have to replace them every ten years and that's every two years we have to buy a truck. And um, so why not put? Just instead of, you know, we, we were paying for them with leases, but maybe if. Going forward, we do pay for them upfront with cash, which is, which is, does save. But then we'd have to really be disciplined about sticking to that schedule and always putting aside that money on the off years. And of course, we can't commit to doing, we can't commit future boards to doing that or have any surety that they would, but. Um. That's one option, which is just, it's just saving us for this year, only probably half, I would say. I think you still have to put some money in.
So you would say that then the, the transfer that's in the current budget would be reduced by that amount, which would save in taxation?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If you reduce the transfer in, yeah.
All right. I'm trying to take notes here.
I, I just, I don't think it should, you know, just push it, pushing it out a year isn't, doesn't really solve the problem. It, it solves it for this year, but then next year it's gonna be there twice as, twice as bad. So.
Just for information purposes, there is in year two of the current plan, another truck.
And that one, I think, was set up for leasing in that one. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, Donna, if you would, for the sake of conversation, um. If we were to use another fifty thousand from Fund seventeen, would you insert that as a revenue adjustment? Because I don't really want to artificially lower the fire department's budget, which would make them have to climb a steep hill next year on their budget increase. If we could show that fund transfer, is it okay to show it as a revenue adjustment?
So you're thinking of a fund transfer from Fund seventeen to the ambulance payroll?
Well, correct. Wherever, wherever it goes to, it would, we would know it's reducing ambulance payroll. Right. I just, I'm not sure what the proper mechanism is to do that.
Okay, so then that would be a fund to transfer. It would be a revenue item for the ambulance payroll budget and it would reduce the amount from the operating budget.
Okay. So their five ninety-one request would actually go down to five forty-one?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess if we did that, we'd have to note that, that this creates an artificial. They would create a big jump next year if we didn't do this extra fifty thousand. We would.
Yes. Yes.
So we have to be careful about that. All right. Well, can you, can you do it for the moment just so we can work with it? Um, and then Christina, if we worked with what you were talking about, um, so were you thinking of taking a hundred thousand out of the dump truck thing? By pushing it off one year?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So if we reduce the transfer to, I'll let Donna finish this first.
Okay.
Are you, are you done with the ambulance one yet, Donna?
I am done with the fifty thousand.
Okay.
For ambulance.
Okay, so if we, if we ask CIP to, if we, if we, whatever, made the CIP plan, push out the dump truck a year.
Yes.
And we took a hundred thousand dollars out of that, that would be, right, okay, out of the capital reserve there. All right. What have we done to our magic mill rate number now?
One point one mil increase.
Okay, we're getting somewhere, aren't we? Somewhere, we're moving bigger dollars, so we're. Okay.
Okay, um, Mike, I just wanted to mention to you that your, your bottom line by doing that, your bottom line capital spending in CIP. Last year it was six hundred and forty-five thousand. If you take out this one hundred thousand. Next year it's going to be six hundred and nine thousand. So it's less spending on capital.
Than the current fiscal.
Than the current fiscal year.
Okay. All right. So that's something to think about in CIP world. We're going backwards. Well, there's no easy answer here because otherwise it's, um, my, the taxes on my house go up three hundred and some dollar. Well, even though, even now, the taxes on my house are going up three hundred and some dollars. It was, they were up six hundred and some dollars. All right. Um, other thoughts, board members? All right, um, what would people think about us, um? Saying this is enough budget discussion for the moment, we'll move on to. Move into new business. We'll see if there are any appropriations we want to do tonight. Do we want to sit on this for? Um, a week till next week and, and try to come up with other areas? What do we want to do?
Uh, Mike?
Yeah.
I'd like to, I'd like to, uh, uh, second your motion to move on to new business. And I think that we should do budget appropriations next week. And I, I think we've, we've made some, some serious progress here in, in the two hours we've spent. I, I think it's time to move on to new business and.
Okay, it wasn't a motion, but I appreciate your support.
There we go. Support. I support my, my, my chairman.
Thank you.
How's that?
All right. So, um, unless there's an objection, we'll, um, move from budget discussion to new business, um. Moose Meadow Road, Erica, do you want to talk about that anymore? Do you need action from us tonight or are you just keeping us aware right now?
So, um, any additional appropriation from you would need to go, uh, would have to eventually come from you. Um, go back to the Board of Selectmen to call a town meeting. We do have the annual town meeting, which this item, uh, that appropriation could go on. And that's scheduled for April nineteenth. Um, so somewhere between, um, now and the budget hearing. We, we would ask you to take action. Um, it's certainly up to you. You looked at a figure. Again, the Board of Selectmen didn't approve a vendor because we don't have funding, right? So, so we, we, well, we aren't at that point yet. Um, and, um, we didn't, um, approve a full dollar amount to come to you. Because the Board of Selectmen didn't have all of the information that I presented with you tonight. But certainly if this board were ready to take action to, um, recommend that the Board of Finance call a town meeting for the appropriation of dollars. You could do that and we'd be looking to put that, uh, eventually on the, um. Annual town meeting and try to combine that to save.
Did you say, Erica, that you're waiting for a third bid?
Troy was getting a third bid that was a non, uh, state-approved vendor. I don't know when that will come through. Uh, again, we won't see Troy back until Monday.
Okay, so you'll have a, you have a BOS meeting Monday, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and then we have Board of Finance on Thursday. So if you, if you pull things together on Monday, you could bring it to us next Thursday, right? Okay. All right. So if that's okay with board members, we'll just be ready to. She'll have the most up-to-date information and then we can. Throw it, throw the motion in there and sent, set the process and.
I will remind you that you may need to do some work to determine where you're going to take the money and make sure you have your budget, um, because you may not have the, uh. You will not have, um, Donna at your next meeting.
Fair point. Very fair point. Pete?
Yeah, I just, I just, uh, I, I applaud the fact that we're putting it off a week till we have more information. I, I do. Seriously, uh, have reservations about not budgeting this in and. And this would normally be a CIP project and, and to not put it through the normal process. Even though it is an emergency or at least budgeted for, for someplace makes me more than a little nervous.
Think of it this way, Pete, it's E-C-I-P, emergency CIP.
So can I address that? So Peter, for instance, this particular budget that you have before you, which I keep hearing you say you want to cut. By just to get to certain numbers that you feel more comfortable with at Public Works, not necessarily knowing what those dollars are going to go to. The entire road maintenance budget is two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Um, that's to do chip seal and some paving on some roads. We're telling you that thirty-nine hundred feet of a road that for many years has needed to be done. Is going to cost us over three hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, I, I understand that.
May I finish, may I finish? We could put every road into CIP and then we would, you couldn't fund them all. You have funded two roads in CIP in almost thirty years. So at some point, we need to start putting money into our roads and our infrastructure so that we don't come to you with these emergency situations. Nobody's comfortable coming to you in that way, but if we don't, if stop kicking the can down the road and put money into our infrastructure. This is what's going to happen, time after time.
Okay.
Okay. I, I understand that. I just, I just want to see this budgeted. And I, I, I don't like to see this, this time after time emergency repair and, and we need to budget it. And I'm not saying just cut willy-nilly. I'm saying cut, let's cut where we have to cut and add where we have to add. And if we have to add the roads to CIP, that's what we're going to need to do, but we. We, we want a lot of stuff in this town. We just can't afford all of it and we have to, which we're, we're getting. And I think roads are, are. As, 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 as a, um, libertarian-minded Republican, roads are important. Public safety is important. These are things that I want to see. And, and I, I just want them in the budget. I don't want them just, you know, pulling them out of, from wherever it, it's the time comes up.
All right, let's, uh, let's move on. Um. Budget appropriations. Um, does anyone want to tackle any of the appropriations tonight or we want to just, um, hit it full speed next week?
I move, we hit it full speed next week.
Okay, um, so you, you're moving to table the budget appropriations till next week?
Yeah, and, and then, in, in addition to that, usually, uh, somebody provides us with a sheet of all the motions with the numbers on it.
I have it already.
Read them off and.
Uh, Donna gave it to me already. It's ready to go.
Excellent. I just hadn't seen it yet.
It's, it's actually on the second tab of that Excel spreadsheet. I saw it.
Yeah, that's right. If you, if you go to the spreadsheet, on the bottom edge, there are little tabs on the bottom. If you clicked around, you'll find fun stuff.
Oh, thank you. I, I didn't see the tab because, uh, I'm using a, a tablet to read some of this stuff that doesn't have full. Capabilities for documents. I'll check, check it with a different device.
Okay, I'm going to second Pete's motion to table appropriations to the next meeting. Um, discussion on the motion. All right, Kelsey, you ready to call a vote?
Yes. Stephanie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Christina?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes. Did you get Pete?
Oh, and Pete?
Yes.
All right.
Mike, also in preparation for next week, I just want to, i- is there any way that we can? I know that, that, that they've been trying, but I just felt geeky about going to the appropriation stage with a mystery number and. Placeholder in the budget.
Oh, um.
On payroll. That's just such a.
Can I speak to that? The number that you have.
Give me a second to ask you to speak.
I know, if the contract is ratified, the number you have will be the number you have there. I'm not coming to you with a new number, Stephanie. I just can't tell you what that percentage that you have in front of you is made up of, but it is a real number. We won't be coming back to you with another number.
Right. It's still, it's still, there's still some kind of confusion though about how that all fits in. I'm just saying, it feels, feels like we're doing some things blind. You may not be blind, but I am.
Right, and I apologize for that. I, I, I wish nothing more than to bring you a ratified contract that we can talk about real numbers and I can tell you what the impact is next year. Um, and if our attorney were still on, he could tell you that multiple times a day, um, I check in with him to see if we're ready to move on that.
Maybe tell the union that we're not funding their employees, their bargaining unit salaries if they can't get themselves together.
Cause what was the original date on this?
The contract expired June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Thanks.
The ta- the town finally demanded to, um, work with the, the union on March first, twenty twenty-one. Uh, we began meeting in November before Christmas. We, um, had negotiated, we were waiting now for. Um, the parties to do their work. And I will say it is not the bargaining members that are here. Um, it is their representation. So they, I am working with our representation here, um, to try to address this. We are both working, um, hard to get, um, some, some work done.
No, I know it's annoying to you, but that was, and that was, that date was, that can, you know, when you say expired, that was after the MOU?
The MOU was for one year and so the contract continues as it is until such time as a new contract is in place or we put an MOU. To specifically extend it.
Right, so the really expiration was in twenty twenty?
Yeah, because.
The, the original contract would have, without the MOU, yes.
So they've kind of delayed it for two years. So that's.
I won't, yeah, I won't say that. Stephanie, that was a mutual agreement because we were going into negotiations at the heart of COVID. And no one really, um, could figure out how to do that with Zoom.
Okay.
Okay, um. Correspondence, you all have it all. Um. We're back to present to speak. In video, wave your hand, Matt Clark?
Yeah, I, um, wanted to talk about the, uh, the, um, ARPA issue. So regarding the, the ARPA legality. I thought Mr. O'Donnell's opinion was unconvincing, put it that way. No one's questioning whether we should be following the ARPA guidelines. That part wasn't useful at all. The, the key question is, is the legislative body of Wellington allowed to relinquish its sole authority? To approve spending money? At the federal level, Congress, they, the courts of rule, Congress can't do that. You're not allowed to hand your own spending authority over to, to anyone else, the agencies or anything like that. If that's the case, why is it okay for the town of Wellington? Doesn't make any sense. And, and how do we handle the conflict between the two ordinances? We have one ordinance that says Tommy can approve spending. Well, it says that only the town meeting can approve spending. And then we have another one that says that, that a non-elected board is going to approve spending. Anyway, lastly, uh, why, why are we doing this? We, we say to save one week, uh, in the approval process by not holding a town meeting? I'm not buying it. That doesn't make sense. I think the real issue is, um, you know, making sure that the people don't have the opportunity to vote on spending. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else present to speak? If you're in video, wave your hand. Peter Latinjic.
Unmute. Peter Latinjic, ninety-seven Trask Road. I want to express my gratitude to the board on two levels tonight. First, you're, you're sober and, and careful. Look at the budget. I, I see you're working in a direction. That will help the town and still maintain services and I think that's, that's great. More importantly, um, is, uh, the point that. Matt, Matt Clark just made regarding the ARPA discussion tonight by our attorney. Um. I was really pleased to see our, our chairman, other members of the board. Christina, ARPA, all express apprehension about this ordinance. Not the part that, um. A lot, you know, meets the requirements of ARPA spending and what, what those, I have complete confidence that that committee can. Identify projects, um, that are appropriate for that funding. To circumvent our, our time-honored financial practices and more importantly, our, our form of government that defines who we are. That precedes the statutes, whether it be state or federal. Um, because Wellington was here before Connecticut and before the United States. That's who we are. It defines who we are. Um, and, and if something doesn't feel right, it's usually wrong. I, I suggest a better path forward. The committee could buy the ordinance that we voted for, the attorney is correct about that. Um, can establish the projects, identify them. And we, we can voluntarily still submit ourselves to the normal practice of the Board of Finance. Reviewing the final expenditures and approving them in groups or en masse in town meeting. Nothing precludes us from doing the right. Nothing precludes us from doing the right thing, and I strongly encourage you guys to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak? Either raise your hand or unmute and call out your name. I think I have everyone all on one screen now. Last call for present to speak. Okay, um, Good and Welfare. Did see Lisa on for a little while. I wanted to thank her for joining us. I know she has, um, some stuff going on in her family, so I appreciate her time, and we wish her well with that, and, um, I thank everybody for the care and thought, hard work tonight. Pete Tanaka?
Yes, I have two, I have two things under Good and Welfare. The first one is, uh, Jim Gilligan couldn't be with us tonight because his son's getting married today, and he thought that was more important than a Board of Finance meeting, which I, I'm, uh, a little weary of, but, you know, that, that being that, uh,
And St. Patrick's Day.
Yeah, St. Patrick's Day, his son's getting married, uh, he couldn't make it to the Board of Finance. We wish him all the best luck on that.
Of course.
The second thing is that, uh, I, I, I heard from an unnamed, uh, town, uh, citizen this week that they couldn't believe the amount of work that, that, uh, Mike McCoo was putting in as chairman of this, this, uh, board, and, and they, they, they thought that that he was doing outstanding work for the town, so I, I thought I'd pass that along.
Well, I appreciate that. Okay, anything else for the go-to-the-order?
Move to adjourn. Yeah, how much longer are we going to continue this way?
Can, can you be more specific about this way?
You, you want us to be able to see your face, Jeffrey?
Well, you, you know, it's no secret that I have never really cared for this process. Um, you know, there's certain thing, you know, y- you, you put yourself on mute just so you're, you're not going to have, you know, um, fear of the back, you know, background noise. There's a certain amount of in-person communication, which is lovely, which I, even though for a person that dislikes people, I, I enjoy. And it makes the whole process go a hell of a lot faster, especially when we're going to go through this whole budget, um, line-by-line appropriations, having to call a rose name.
What I would say, Jeff, is that I intended to put it on the agenda for, um, future meetings for us to figure out our next path.
Okay, I, I mean, to me, it's pretty simple, but, you know.
Well, we can't decision tonight here in Good and Welfare.
You can't make a decision. Can I tell you, as of right now, we only have until April thirtieth. Um, and unless some new legislation comes forth after April thirtieth, you got to come back in person. That changes, we'll let you know.
All right, Jeff, so it's time for you to trim your hair and brush your teeth. We're coming back in person soon.
All the question.
All right, um, Pete Tanaka, are you ready?
He did it.
Yeah, well, we got
I did, I did do it, but I moved to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye and wait.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that looks unanimous. Good night, everybody. Thank you.